Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Hearing none, we will move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klein, second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there any board member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve items A through E on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Schleter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. Does anyone have an announcement for tonight?
I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the jazz cabaret at the high school on Saturday, February 9th. It's from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And they have various groups from the high school and middle school also that are going to be performing and the roundtables are set up so it's kind of cabaret, social style. It's just a really, really nice event if you're free that night and want some reasonably priced entertainment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I went to the Pleasant View last Thursday for the grading for learning world cafe session. Very interesting. There's two more sessions coming up that Mr. Fuckler has set up. Leave their March and April.
Do you know if those will be different world cafes?
I believe he said the first one was more geared toward elementary school, the second is more middle school, and the third is more towards high school age kids. So it's very interesting and highly promising.
Thank you.
I believe he's going to be coming to us with an update at our second February meeting.
You're on that committee?
I am.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Next, item seven, the school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, February 13th, 2013, at Robinwood Elementary at 6 o'clock p.m. And a regular board meeting Wednesday, February 27th, 2013, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock p.m. Item eight, we have reports and presentations. First, we have the architects update. Mr. Milzer?
Yes, there's a lot of work going on around this and we have Mark Lewandowski with us from Epstein UN Architects to let us know how they're progressing and what the plan is for the future.
Thank you.
Open the screen here. Can anybody hear me? Just kind of a brief disclosure of who I am. I'm a senior project manager with Epstein UN and I happen to be a resident of Franklin. My wife is a teacher at Robinwood School and I have two kids in the district. And I'm also a graduate of Franklin. So I am just filling in for Bob Weigert, who you're probably used to seeing. He'll be here. There probably are occasions where I'll be back filling in for him.
I saw Bob at the school board convention, so I believe that's what he's doing today.
That is correct. So that actually goes into the night with other activities sometimes. Just, you know, we haven't had the chance to come and talk to you. It's been a long time since the November referendum and just kind of a reminder, question one involved question two passed. One was the high school academic expansion and renovation and the high school auditorium, which is really the forming art center is kind of how we're referring to that now. So those are the projects that we're moving forward with. That is the budget and I can kind of go over the timeline a little bit later. So Jim, you want to go to the next one?
So just, I don't know, I think there's new school board members also, but not knowing how much we went over with as far as the design and construction process and who's been through that process before, I just kind of wanted, just to take a brief step back on the phases of design and construction. Right now, immediately after the referendum passed, we went into a schematic design phase. And a schematic design phase is really taking the referendum plans and solidifying the design. So it's really kind of moving the big pieces of the puzzle around, meeting with staff, finding out a little more detailed program, and fitting all those pieces together into more of a cohesive plan. That's the phase that we're in. We actually really just ended that phase and those drawings are actually at CG Schmidt for budgeting purposes. After each one of these phases, we go through a budgeting process because we need to obviously stay on budget. So that's the process that's being budgeted right now. The next phase that we're going to be going through is design development where we take all those pieces of the puzzle that we moved around and we go into each program and meet with the teachers of those areas. So an example would be the art department. We kind of know the basic pieces of the puzzle for those rooms and square footage is, but now we have to dive down into maybe the ceramics room. You know, what equipment goes in that room? Where are the pieces of the puzzle within that room itself? That's really what design development is all about. Once we're through design development, then we're into construction documents. Construction documents really is figuring out the nuts and bolts, how we're going to build this building. You know, we're going to have concrete masonry walls here, we're going to have drywall walls over here, we're going to have roof trusses here. We're really getting into the details of how to build this building and instructing the contractors how to build this building. Once we're through construction documents, we go into a bidding phase. The way this project is set up, we're actually going to have two bidding phases. One is going to be early in spring, basically the end of April. And that's designed to have an early bid package out that relates to just site construction. So everything that we're doing on the site, adding parking so that they can start moving dirt around. And then the other part of that would be the structure. So the steel that is going to support the roof and the floors, all of that is a bid package where you'll start seeing some of that happen already this summer. There's going to be another bid package that's going to go out in August and that is kind of the rest of everything else that's going to be built. So all the drywall walls, all the ceilings, all the carpet, all those items, that would be going out in a bid package in August. So those are kind of the phases. Construction, we're still on target to have bulldozers and grading equipment sometime, likely in May. We'll probably have a groundbreaking somewhere between April and May. So everything's kind of on target there. Just to kind of give you a synopsis of where we've been since November 6th. Obviously, the referendum passed. We had a team kickoff meeting at CG Schmidt's office with the district, CG Schmidt and the EUA team, just to kick off the project. We started officially the following day, November 13th. We did have a preliminary meeting with the city on November 26th, just starting to find out the process that we need to go through to get this project approved. December 11th, we had another 21st century learning presentation at the high school with the high school staff. I think that's a presentation that you also saw, some of you. December 12th and 13th is where we had the all-day flow of teachers coming in to meet with them, again, to talk about programming, what are their space needs and what was in the referendum. You know, there's certain things that were mentioned in the referendum, but the reality is we met with pretty much all staff departments because a lot of this is intertwined and there is a domino effect through these projects where if we move a department here, this other department is affected. So we did have a site soil investigation, that's the borings that go down into the soil so we can, I think we had close to 20 some soil borings out on site, just so we can figure out what kind of soils we have in different areas. And then, as I stated before, right now, we're kind of at the end of schematic design and we're going into design development. That's pretty much my report. Any questions?
I have a question. When you had the meeting with the city, who exactly did you meet with?
We met with Nick at this point. There is another meeting that we need to make an appointment for. We're not quite ready for that. We need to have a certain amount of design done before we can do that. But that would be a meeting with the mayor and the aldermen. There is a meeting that we need to do for that before we can go to kind of their internal planning review team. So the chain of events is bring your stuff in, meet with the mayor, district will be there, obviously, and meet with them and then move on to the planning department.
So what jurisdiction do they have over the building? Is it permitting? Because it's a government building and it's zoned for government buildings, so what is there? I can understand, you know, for occupancy and fire, but what is exactly?
We still need to meet all the zoning rules that are for any development in the city of Franklin. From, a lot of them are site conditions. You know, we couldn't necessarily put parking all the way up to property lines. That would be an example that something we can't do because in that respect, other developers would point to that and say, well, you guys can do it, but we can't. It's just, we need to follow all the same rules that anybody else that is building in Franklin needs to follow from a site standpoint. From the standpoint of the building, we need to follow the same codes that all buildings in the state of Wisconsin need to follow. And they do have jurisdiction over some of those codes and the fire department in particular has a lot of jurisdiction over a certain amount of code.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the update.
I was just going to say thank you for the update.
Will this be put up on the district website?
This can do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
The next report is the school safety update. Mr. Milzer?
Yes, we're coming to you with an update. Another issue we've been working on. So we have with us tonight Mark Cludier, our manager of Buildings and Grounds, to talk about what's going to change with the physical spaces. And then we have Mary Pat Seaworth from Ben Franklin Elementary, Chris Reuter from the middle school, and Mike Noack from the high school, who will talk about the procedural changes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Well, we're working hard to secure our entrances, much like the high school is now, where when you go into the vestibule at the high school, you have to go into the office, where it is staffed during the entire school day solidly with someone there to help you and assist you and to manage it. So at the other six buildings, they each have their own separate challenges, but there's really two solutions out there. At four of the elementary schools, we're going to be able to create that same type of, I call it a combination of friendly and secure entrance, where I actually can come in as a visitor and actually get to a human being and talk to them. But yet, we're going to create a buzz outdoor so that once I'm in the office, I then have to pass muster, make sure I have a background check, make sure I have a reason to be there before the secretary, who will have a fob around her neck, will let me out. So that's really at Ben Franklin, Countrydale, Robinwood, and Southwood Glen. So it'll be the same, it'll be very similar to the high school. It'll actually be very similar, almost identical, to the rec department at the high school. Where once you go into the rec department, they have to buzz you into the building at the rec department. It's slightly different than the main entrance of the high school. So that's those four. We're working very hard on that. They each have their own design challenges where, for example, at Countrydale, we actually have to move the vestibule doors into the building to actually create enough space to get into the office because it's quite tight there. Ben Franklin is probably the easiest one because we have enough space there to actually punch a door from the vestibule into the office and they'll still be in front of the countertop. We thought about vestibule traps for those buildings, but the office staff would not be able to see the person stuck in the vestibule and we thought it to be fairly unfriendly. However, when you get to Pleasant View and Forest Park, the proximity of the office to the front entrance doesn't allow for that. So we are creating vestibule traps in those two buildings. The good news is, is that the people who control that door can physically see you from their workstation. So that I can, I can talk to you, yes, sir, can I help you? I'm here to see, whatever. Okay, very good, sir. Please come to the office and I can see the person. So I'll be able to see them on the monitor as well as be able to see them physically to wave them in. So we'll be controlling that. And then once they're into the office, then we'll go with the rest of our procedures of background checks and those kinds of things. So that's moving forward as quickly as possible. Everything's been ordered. It's moving forward. Our expectation is, is that most of the material will arrive in mid to late February. So we're targeting the 21st and the 22nd of February, which are non-school days, to do as much of this work as possible because it will be disruptive for the offices. So we'll do as much of this work as possible. And so if you're a staff member with a key, you'll be able to come in. If you're not, you'll be, you'll have to be, it'll be a controlled entrance. In addition to that, if you're a staff member and you go into the office, you have to have your key to get back out or you have to ask the secretary. So people will have to be carrying their keys and I know that's part of the procedures as well.
Are they switching the locks as well?
Reversing them?
Yeah.
Yes.
I know some of the, they have to lock from the outside instead of from the inside?
Yes. What you do is you take the regular knob lock for the office and you reverse it. So the free handle is on the school side.
But even in the, if for some reason that fails in the hallways, I know at Countrydale you have to unlock from the outside, you can't unlock from the inside? The doorknobs, the classroom doorknobs?
Oh, the classrooms, yes. The classrooms will be locked. The classrooms are all locked.
So you said, once a person is buzzed into the building, then you're going to check a background checklist?
I'm not overly familiar with the processes and procedures. I'm creating the facilities that will allow us to do those things. So we'll be able to control the entrance, whether you're in the vestibule in a controlled situation, at Pleasant View and Forest Park, or whether you're in the office and you can't just walk into the school at large at the other four elementaries.
So we could move on to the procedure part of it if we don't have any more questions on actually?
Who does the procedure part for each school? Is it the school themselves?
All of the principals have worked together on procedures so that we're doing the same thing everywhere. So why don't we change to that now and have the principals let you know what they've
I thought we'd start with the youngest ones first, our little babies. And just so you know, we did meet as an entire administrative team. We came up with some procedures that would be the same at all the elementary, middle, and high school. And then we had some separate ones for our elementary schools, but again, similar for all five. You know that each of the buildings is slightly different, so we created a letter that we sent home to parents to explain some changes that would be happening immediately and some of you that our parents probably got those letters. But we had to obviously tweak each one to make it school specific. So at Ben Franklin's, for instance, we talked about where parents come to pick their children up or drop them off in the morning and the procedures in the morning are different at my school than they are at Pleasant View or at Robinwood. So a letter went out to all the parents explaining those things. We, in all five of our elementary schools, we added three and a quarter hours of educational assistance time in the office. At the current time, we have had basically one and a half people in the office, so in the afternoon, it was only the main secretaries. So now we will have two people in the office at all times when the children are there. So from 9:00 to 4:00 every day, there will be two people in the office. And we've been successful at securing four out of the five we're working on at Ben Franklin. So that's the last one, but we've been successful at getting that piece done. And I think that will really help because anytime someone's taken out of the office or the secretary's taken out for health room occurrences to, you know, help a child or a parent get to someplace else, that would leave the office empty. So I feel really good about adding that extra time. I think it's great. We've been working on checking all of our visitors and volunteers to make sure that, you know, anybody that's really working with our children, we've done, had a background check done and things like that. So we're trying to really limit who's actually coming into the buildings to work with the children. So that's great. And then certainly we've reviewed things with our staff. We've each held staff meetings to talk about such things as making sure that since all the doors will be locked, that you carry your keys with you, that you have your badge on, that you stop people who don't have a badge and ask who they are and could they please go to the office if they've missed signing in or something like that. So we've been really careful about that. We've also made sure that our young children, who are very giving in nature, don't open the doors for people that they don't, for anybody. Because even for people that they might think they know, if they're not a staff member, they shouldn't be coming in those doors. They should be coming in the front. So we've had those discussions with our staff to have discussions with the students. We've locked all of our classroom doors and at the elementary level, that's a little difficult because you have kids going in and out all the time. So we've had this great device that Mr. Reuter gave us, which was to put a magnet over the lock so the door can actually close without really locking except when you need to and then you could lock it in a second without having to go out and actually physically lock the door. So the students can get in and out every time they go to the bathroom or they go to the office or they go next door to the teacher or whatever. But it's very secure in and instant because they're set to lock, which is great. So that's been a really nice thing and all classroom doors are done that way. We've reviewed all of our lockdown procedures as a school. We've bunched every single classroom and talked about exactly where the children would be. We have not had our lockdown drill yet because we didn't want to do it too close to the time that things happened in Connecticut. But we, and we all told our parents that we would let them know for this first one when it would happen. We did want to coordinate that with the police chief, however, and see if they want to either witness it or come and help us out, give some suggestions. So we're trying to work on that piece with them. And we're certainly working with Mark and our custodians and the secretaries regarding the entrances. So that's basically what we've done at the elementary school.
Thank you. Just real quick with the elementary school. I know at Countrydale, they have a lot of retired people come in and do exercises. So that was my concern, how are they going to procedurally do that? And then that's, so that's going to be a Countrydale thing that they're going to have to figure that out?
Right. And that's really working with Park and Rec. I know that Dr. Nola is working with the Park and Rec department to really kind of solve that issue of how are we going to do the classes where can they come in where it would be safe for the rest of the school.
And what are you hearing from parents then? Are they?
Most of the parents, real honestly, the vast majority of parents are really grateful. They're very, they're very patient with the kind of the new procedures and are grateful that we're watching out for the children so closely. At Ben Franklin, for instance, we have a couple of different pickup plans at the end of the day. One of which is that the parents can pick their children up by coming into the back of the school in that back entrance. And we've locked the doors to the school itself, you know, where the parents can wait there and then the children go to them. In the past, some parents would really like to come and help their children pack their backpacks and things like that. So that's really cut that off and they really understand the necessity for that. So that's been really helpful to send letters, to communicate as much as possible. I would say, you know, we've had a couple of people that have said, oh, I understand, but, you know, just now I have to fill out this background check before I come and volunteer even though I've been doing it for a year or something. But they're very understanding. They really have been great.
Any other questions?
I'm just wondering how you are tracking all the background checks. Do you guys have it in a computer system? Because that's probably going to be a big job and getting bigger all the time.
It's a very large database. What we do is check the backgrounds here in each R and if a parent or visitor does pass the background check, they are entered into the database. If they do not pass the background check, they are not entered into the database. Therefore, in the school setting, the secretary or the principal may check that database and if your name is not in the database, you are not allowed to proceed into the school building. So that's how we manage the database. And then I manage the communication and the follow-up with those individuals who have backgrounds that need to be further investigated.
So it's not school specific?
No, no, I do. It's very confidential. The school's never told why someone is not allowed to volunteer.
But we do have some that aren't allowed, then?
Absolutely, we do.
I just have a quick question. Once in a while, as board members come and tour the schools, do we need to be filling something out quickly?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we wear our tag, which we don't have on. We wear our tags, but should we be filling something out so we have access to the?
As employees of the school district, you had a background check at one time, so you're covered.
Automatic, isn't it?
Dr. Miller, on the background checks, are you just checking C cap or are you doing a further check than that?
We pay for the, the check through the Department of Justice. It's about $7 a check, so it's a, it's a thorough check.
Thank you.
So transition to the middle school. Much of what Mary Pat said, we met as, as stated before, an entire administrative team and put together some common procedures, and obviously it's a little different based on each element's. Mr. Quini mentioned, Forest Park, we have a wide range of space between the entrance to the building and where you check in. So one of the first things that Mrs. Weston and myself did when we talked about our building was, we had multiple doors open in the morning for access for staff and students, and we've limited that to two entrances, our main entrance and for staff, a back entrance in the rear of the building near the parking that's convenient for the teaching staff. At 7:40, when the students are allowed into the building, that door is locked and the only entrance for the remainder of the day, whether you're a traveling teacher or you leave during the day and come back, or visitors, is the main entrance because that is obviously the safest entrance and the most visible for anyone coming into the building. So until a system, buzzer system is put in place, we're very diligent with any staff members, like C were saying, wearing their badges, visitors to the building come in, we always have someone at our front guidance window, the glass sliding glass doors that visitors come in. We've had in practice all year, if you're checking out your child, you have to show identification. We have so many parents, we have from all of the elementary setting, it's a little different, you're only there for two years, you're not there for six, so you're not, you're not knowing all the parents right away who they are. So they must show identification until you, the office staff has built that relationship and knows parents by a first name. But any guest, whether you're a parent for a pre-arranged meeting or you're Mary Pat coming to visit me, whatever it might be, must check in, must either have their district badge on, or if they're a visitor to the district, have that badge that's given to them and worn. We've directed our staff as well that you see someone in the hallway without a badge, whether they're a substitute teacher or visitor, whatever it might be, that you're not sure who that is, question them, direct them towards the office and notify the office right away. Teachers are all carrying their keys, our doors are in the locked position at all times. It is inconvenient, I was in a bunch of classrooms today and I got to pull out my key and interrupt the class, but kids are getting used to it, teachers getting used to it, we're doing the magnet strip as well, so that it's an easy transition in and out of the rooms. As far as that, we have a visitor, we were trying to pre-arrange, all meetings with teachers are pre-arranged, we ask that teachers, whether it's for a conference with parents or parents want to talk with multiple teachers, that they set a time that they can only meet during the school day, that's pre-arranged, and all of our meetings are held at the front of the building, in our guidance department, in our conference room. Meetings after school, after 3:30, which are our school hours, they can be in the classroom with the teacher, we ask the teachers meet them at the front of the building, but we have many people coming in and out of the building, as you know, after 3:15 for extracurricular events, so it's hard to control that. So we do open the cafeteria doors at that time because there are Park and Rec activities taking place there. There are community clubs with different fitness programs taking place in the cafeteria, so we didn't, we don't control the door entrance ways of the cafeteria as much during after school hours. But many of the practices that Mary Pat said, we are following through, we're planning to do a lockdown procedure as well at the same time that elementary schools are. We wanted to talk with the police chief as well and see if there was some way to correlate it around the district, and we will be notifying parents prior to that as well. And then one will be held later on in the year, as we compensate for two of them for the year. We met with all of our staff members, gender intent, to go over these procedures and background checks and arranging times to meet with parents, and so everyone had to sign off that they attended and heard the message out of the clear. So that's where we're at at the middle school.
Regarding your doors in the school, not, you didn't used to lock all the classroom doors, correct?
Correct.
Last time I had a tour of Forest Park, I noticed some of the doors didn't have windows in them.
Good question.
Are they, is that corrected now?
We have, Mrs. Weston and myself talked with Mark, and when we have plans to do that, I believe.
They will be.
Yes, we, every door has been a comment for that doesn't have a window, and that will be taken care of.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, they will be, as well as that back entrance that he spoke of with the teachers, we're putting a two-level locking system on that, so the teachers during the school day will have key access to that back door. So that won't be allowed to be open either, that won't be open to the public, it will only be open if you have a key for the building. It's a two-level locking system with a magnetic lock and a lock in the door.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
While you were talking, Chris, I, I thought of one question that actually might pertain more to Mary Pat, but I know that the middle school has a couple of events, like award ceremonies and things where the parents come into the building during the day, and obviously the elementary schools have a lot of music programs and things like that. Are you going to, do people have to have background checks to attend those, or if they just stay in the gym area or?
Right, and we can, especially for our large concerts, you know, we, we really will look at staffing areas where people could go in different directions, or like at Ben Franklin, we're really lucky, we can lock those, those areas that go often to the pods to separate that, so that we can really protect the children as much as possible. But it would be impossible to make sure that every grandma, grandpa and.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
I'm glad you're willing to fill them out.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Your turn.
At the high school level, you know, for us, as Mark said, we're, our, our entrance is very secure, which is a very nice thing, and it kind of becomes the, the starting point for all of this. The two kind of areas that I'd like to touch on are kind of from a front office standpoint, how procedurally we've dealt with things over the course of the last several weeks, and then as well with staff, how we've, how we've worked with staff. From that front office perspective, because we have that secure entrance, we have a very nice situation in terms of knowing everyone and having access to everyone that comes in. There's always someone manning that desk. Quite often, there's multiple people right there to, to greet people, and it kind of becomes the starting point. As we started to talk about these procedures, though, what's kind of interesting is, you know, within probably three days, I got a list that was about a page long of all of the different situations where we have visitors coming in and kind of the toll that it was putting on office staff, which, and I think one of the themes in all of this is everyone's had to kind of realize this, this isn't ideal, you know, this isn't something that's going to be easy, we, we all have to work through this. For example, though, and you know, our building, one of the areas that gets a lot of traffic from outsiders is our guidance office. So anyone going to student services really has to go through that front office area. In the past, we would kind of say, okay, around the corner and, you know, over to, over to guidance, whereas now, we're escorting them, we've come up with a procedure for student services where we'll actually funnel them through our office hallway and then out through the assistant principal doorway, doorway number two, if you're familiar with it. That's something we just, we've had to get used to. We've also got situations with probably more, more volume, nothing against the elementaries and the middles, but probably more volume just because of the numbers of kids. And in some regards, the, you know, some of the activities that kids are, for example, we get, it's kind of a neat time, we get probably six to eight recruiters coming through, literally on a daily basis, most often wanting to meet with coaches, which, you know, becomes a little troublesome in terms of a teacher maybe not being able to come to the office or someone having to escort them. Those are, you know, part of the, the growing pains that we've kind of had to, to work through. As I think Chris mentioned, we're trying to stress very, you know, very hard with, with staff, that if you have, for example, parents coming in and it's during the school day, we're trying very hard for those meetings to occur in our front office area or in our guidance conference area, which will minimize traffic in the general school of outsiders. And as has been said, anytime we have people working with students, we, we, we go through our process. Kind of an interesting thing that we have of late, which you just saw, was we're going to be deep into construction, and obviously now the planning has begun, so, you know, you saw up there, we have engineers that are coming through. Friday, students won't be there, but we'll have some electrical testing that will be done. We're going to have an awful lot of people coming through that we've, we've talked a bit about working with C.G. Schmidt and some of the contractors that will be coming in to clarify, you know, a, a system to be used. But like Chris has said, you know, for us, visitor passes, identification, we've been very good with that, but that's something we just have to, to continue, to continue on with. In regards to working with staff, at our, our most recent faculty meeting, we, we talked about a lot of these things, the doors being locked, that was one of the first things we did, really after a meeting we had here in December, just before the break. So we followed those same exact procedures and as, as someone who does attendance every day and kind of does rounds in the building, I can tell you that the vast majority of those doors are indeed locked. So that's something that teachers are adhering to. We've talked a lot about planning for upcoming drills, and we would like to do one sooner. One of the things that we've realized in this is that for whatever reason, lockdown drills and emergency drills have always been done later in the year. When you think about freshmen coming in and exposing them sooner to those procedures, it makes a lot of sense for, for us to move them up. We're learning that the law will push doing more of those drills, so we're thinking that that will kind of work itself out, but nonetheless, we would like to do one of those sooner. Staff, though, has been pretty receptive, much like that front office group, they realize that this is the reality that we live in, they realize that it may mean a little bit more, but the vast majority are very, you know, dead set on doing exactly what needs to be done and raising questions, you know, questions to consider. I won't go into those for obvious reasons, but that's helpful to me because when you've got more minds on the building, more people that know the building, it helps us to kind of conceptualize things.
I'd like to go back to where you had said about the construction. I am kind of concerned about having that many people running through the building. Is there any way we could have contractors do their own background checks and then forward that over to us?
We think so.
Something, something to that effect, so we at least know who's, who's out there, because you're going to have 50, 60, 100 people out there that have, you know, pretty good access or supply, you know, security for us or something, because once we start going into the building.
Yeah.
If there's going to be a lot of access, they're going to have.
Yep. In, in 95 and again in 98, everyone was required to wear a, wear a hard hat, that's one giveaway, but also the construction firm does require, they, we've made our own, at the time, we made our own ID tags. We have a different construction company, we would probably be similar procedures where they all had to have, they were all had to pass muster through them, and they all got a tag that said that they were allowed to be on-site. And so we did have security procedures even in 95 and again in 98. So we'll be probably mimicking those same things with maybe some new technology or things to do, but we do have plans for that.
I think that's an interesting point, though, on-site. You brought up we'll have an awful lot of people for a little while outside working, but they're in such close proximity, so we should treat those, those individuals just the same. Then obviously, we're going to reach a point where inside, in addition to being, security issues can be very loud and a busy place, so those procedures will be welcomed.
And how are the kids reacting?
To procedures?
The changes and?
You know, I don't know that they see too much. A lot of what I'm talking about is, is dealt more with dynamics of getting adults through the building and those kinds of things. You know, like I said, because, because our entrance is pretty secure, they've lived that way for a while and they're, they're used to that.
What about the other levels?
I, I think to Mike's point, the kid, they, the teachers expressed, you know, we're going to keep our doors in a locked position, and that's a safety procedure that Mrs. Weston and Mr. Reuter put forth, and that doesn't mean anything's going to change, they've made the adjustments with maybe the kid in the back opens the door for when someone comes in, but I had to address the seventh and eighth grade population at lunch that they're not to let anyone into the building. You know, there was, we had a visitor that was, that was a lunch, lunch lady employee, and she was, she didn't, she went to the wrong door, and it was a cold day, and one of the seventh graders got up and opened the door, and there was an adult there and stopped it and said, we need to go to the front door, and ushered that person that way, and came and told me right away. So that day, I addressed everyone, you know, the kids are caring and kind, and they, it's cold out, they want to let someone in, but we made those right steps to, to let them know as well, there are some changes.
We, we have not made that announcement or spent time with, with students talking about that, but I think we will, it's in our upcoming class meetings and such, it's a place to do that. Our building luckily doesn't have too much traffic from those other entrances, but I think it's still a message that is pretty easy to make.
And I think at the elementary level, it's the same thing, you know, the children are very trusting of adults, and so we've really had to be careful about making sure that, you know, they know that people who come in the front entrance that are really supposed to be there. And so they all, when they come through the front, we know that they're safe for our kids. So it's, it's really one of those things where they just accept it, you know, you can give a pretty simple message. We've not had any children, I thought that maybe there might be some things that happened, particularly because it was at such a young age, that happened in Connecticut, but I think that parents did a really nice job of addressing those concerns with their own individual children, and so we had very little that, that spilled over into the school.
Thank you.
We also just wanted to say that, you know, as we go through the next couple of months, we'll be reviewing these procedures and seeing what tweak, tweaking needs to happen, or what we've forgotten about, or what is maybe an overreaction and things like that. So we'll be looking at those, those procedures.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, item C, human resources report, Mrs. Larson?
This is the human resources report, so I will hand that over to Dr. Miller.
Thank you very much. There's a couple of things we need to do this evening. Every January, the board is required to establish the seats for open enrollment and for Chapter 220. So I'd like to start with Chapter 220, if I could. The district has, has not been accepting new students to the Chapter 220 program for at least three years now, and I would recommend that the board continue not to approve any seats, or new seats, for the Chapter 220 program for the 2013, 2014 school year. So I would be looking for a motion to that regard.
I'll make the motion.
Just a second.
A second.
Any discussion? So, and we could do that legally then?
Absolutely, yes, we've done that for several years now. The Chapter 220 program is a program that we're never quite sure will be continued into the future, and we have, as a district, tried to get away from relying on the, the resources of that program, the fiscal resources of that program.
And how they compare to the open enrollment resources that come with?
In terms of the dollar amount?
Yes.
Mr. Milser, do you know the difference?
Is it dramatically different?
Almost twice as much.
On, on the 220?
For the 220 program.
Okay, and would we, going forward then, we would eventually have no 220 students? I, I mean, we only have 87 at this point, right?
Right.
And some are leaving every year? At some point, we would have zero?
Correct.
And that's kind of what we're, is the plan?
Right, and then we would no longer be relying on those resources to support our budget.
Okay. All, all right, all those in favor of, I'm sorry, Dr. Miller, what was the?
I'm looking for a motion to not to approve any Chapter 220 seats for the 2013, 2014 school year.
All those in favor of not approving any?
All those in favor of not approving any Chapter 220 seats for the 2013-14 school year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'd like to have Mary Jo Herman join us, please. She'd like to come up to the table.
Good night.
Mary Jo manages our open enrollment program for the district. It's quite a large task. I work with her collaboratively, really on the front end of this process every year, to determine the number of seats that we would have available for open enrollment. So I'm going to begin by talking about those seats and that recommendation, and then Mary Jo is here to answer any questions you might have about the process itself. We want to talk a little bit about some changes in the administrative rules to our open enrollment policy that are the result of some changes in law. But you have received in your board packet the recommendation for our open enrollment seats. We are recommending 54 seats he opened. And of those seats, we would find places if there were applicants and room in specific programs for 12 special education students. The law has been changed such that we are now required to allocate a specific number of seats for special education students. That is why you're seeing that for the first time in our report this year. Maybe I'll pause for a minute to see if you have any questions about the number of seats or special education seats.
Do we currently have open enrollment students that are in special education, or would this be the first?
No, we do.
We do. We just never allocated the seats specifically for that. Correct. Okay. And how'd you determine that number?
Paulette could address in terms of special education.
Well, I kind of looked at some numbers from the past. I mean, we currently have about 33 students who come in through open enrollment that are special education. So I looked at the trends and then also looked at our numbers for next year. So for example, in the speech and language program, looking at how many we could accommodate and how many we have. And then it's complicated by, when you look at that little green chart, you know, there are certain grades that we don't have any seats available in regular ed, so there's going to be none in special ed. If there's some schools that are not going to have open enrolled students, so that eliminates those programs. So kind of looked at all of those things and looked at what appeared to be an appropriate number. We may, we may not fill those because by the time you go through all those other things, you might not fill those 12 seats.
So again, it's kind of filling in where we have spots.
That's great.
Is the reimbursement the same then, or does it work differently?
For special education, everybody gets a flat rate. But if a student has special education needs, the district they're coming from has to send us the IP. And then we give the, there's an estimate, a cost estimate that's added to that. So if they're a fourth grade student, but they're getting speech and language and occupational therapy, then those costs are added to that for special ed.
Okay. Thank you. Are these 54 seats, brand new seats, or, so what would our total be then with the 54 seats?
There's some historical data that was provided to you regarding to the number of open enrollment students we currently have. So it would be that number plus the 54.
And again, our percentage would go up also, I'm assuming, Jim? I'm not sure what you're assuming our base growth would be. We're 11.5% last year, and would you assume that even with the 54, that that percentage would hold, or would that also?
It's a hard one to get a handle on because it changes. I would assume it would go up a little bit, but usually some of the kids don't come back either. It isn't like we're working with a solid base of open enrollment students. So it'd probably go up a little bit, though.
But it definitely is, we're at the highest point in our history as far as percent of open enrollment.
Mm-hmm, right.
And again, it's driven by space we have available.
Correct. And you'll notice that the number of seats this year is fewer than there have been in the past, and that is because our class sizes were a little bit higher. And if you go too high with your open enrollment seats, that would force another section to open, and that would exceed the costs you're gaining from providing the open enrollment seat. So you'd have to add staff.
This is managed not to add staff? You're managing to?
Correct.
So basically, we're really just trying to operate at maximum capacity?
Mm-hmm.
And if I'm reading this right, none of the seats will be at Robinwood or Pleasantview because of just general large enrollment there?
The exception would be with kindergarten. For example, if there are 35 children who enroll in kindergarten at Robinwood, we would add open enrollment students because you'd need two sections, so you would definitely add open enrollment at kindergarten in that instance.
Okay.
So I would need a motion to approve the 54 seats for the 2014, 13-2014 school year.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Trailer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
I've also included the open enrollment policy. The only thing that's changed in the actual policy language of the board is the addition of a reference to Wisconsin Act 114. And then I took out some redundant language regarding discrimination because we've added that language as a footer to all of our policies now. So with those changes, the board could vote to adopt this policy again because technically it has changed with that reference and the elimination of that language. The policy administrative rules have changed quite a bit to reflect the changes in Wisconsin Act 114 that pertain primarily to the dates. And the other thing that we have found, Mary Jo and I, working through this the last few years and working through appeals processes, that we needed to define more clearly in our administrative rules, how we do the random selection process. This is a very technical program, and Mary Jo does an excellent job managing all the details of it. So I won't go through all of the changes in the rules, but if you've read it and you have any questions, I know that she can answer them for you now.
Anyone have questions? Mary Jo, is there still a rule that you can deny if you're overcrowded one time per grade level in open enrollment, like elementary moving to middle or middle to high school? That used to be?
No.
An open enrollment rule?
I've never seen that rule in any of the information that I've read, because you're approving the seats. Judy and I do work at that. If we are getting close, you know, we may hold off on offering a seat until we can see what our resident numbers are and then safely feel comfortable going forward. So we manage it that way more so, just keeping our enrollment numbers as active as we can.
I think Ms. Evans is referring to transitions from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. Does an open enrollment student ever have the ability to lose their seat when you transition from level to level?
Right, a current student, because we might be overcrowded in middle school.
Our policy does not dictate that. They don't have to reapply. So once you're in, you're through the duration of the school year, or the year of school years. So if you come in as a kindergarten, you're guaranteed to go through a list of subvential truancy or expulsions. That would dictate that you would be asked to leave.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve policy 6320, open enrollment, the revised policy?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Item D is the liaison report for finance, Mrs. Klein?
Um, we wanted to bring this up again because it was requested that we take another look at the check register and how we currently handle that. In the past, we have, it's been on the...
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda, yeah. I don't know why, I couldn't think of the word. It's been on the consent agenda, and it, that puts the board in the position of approving, A, checks that have already been cut, and B, details that we as a board don't necessarily have the contextual information to make an informed decision regarding. So it kind of puts us in a difficult position. So after some discussion with Jim and Dr. Pats, we'd like to propose that we move the check register to the treasures report. That will give us the transparency so that the board can see exactly what checks are being cut. So it keeps us informed of the details, and it also allows us to, you know, continue to ask questions about the checks if we have concerns with them. But there's no vote on the checks, then? Correct. It's strictly informational, like the other finance reports that we get as part of the treasures report currently. I guess, I'm assuming there was a reason there was a vote on it. I haven't been here, you know, forever, so can we do this? I guess, is there not a requirement that we vote on these items?
Not all districts do vote on these items, and I think over the years, it's become less and less applicable. The original came from the statutes where it talks about the board doing the actual work. So we're talking about late 1800s, early 1900s, when the treasurer of the board actually took care of all the money and the checks, and the clerk oversaw whether those were going out or not. So the statute talks about the board clerk giving, I think it's voucher invoices to the treasurer to be paid. So it's kind of a check and balance within the board when the board was doing all the work. In this case, we don't resemble that at all anymore. If you would ask WASB, they would probably tell you, if you want to err on the side of caution, which they always do, go ahead and approve them. And you could continue to do that, but there's, you know, been some discussion about not doing that because you don't really have that information. Boards for years have approved these. I've worked with the treasurer to take a look at them, and because you don't have the information, it's really, why it's on the consent agenda, it's just consented to, knowing that the check has already gone out, it's within the budget, and there are lots of other people looking at it, and there are a lot of other checks and balances, and you have an audit at the end of the year, and all those kinds of things. So I think you can do it. It depends if you want to do it that way or not. That was the solution that we had after talking about it, that we get away from the problems we've had with the check register that way.
Well, I really appreciate the fact that we're getting away from the idea that we're approving them. You know, we're, it's really, it's more of a review, which happens when you move it from that part of the agenda to this. I'm still not sure if I'm sold on that this is the way we review expenditures, that this is the only way we review them. I'm not sure if it's, it still does what I would expect it to do in its current form. Does that make sense?
Well, you're reviewing the expenditure levels in the treasurer's report, on the report on the funds, and what's been spent and what's left in the budget. So you're adopting a budget at the level that the Department of Public Instruction indicates you should, and then you're reviewing those expenditures at that same level. So financially and as a review mechanism, it makes perfect sense. The checks are much more detailed on exactly where the money is being spent and where it's going. But I would say the better measure of how the budget is doing is to look at the treasurer's report on how we're doing in all those different areas.
And I would agree with you that that is a much better report in that regards. However, and I know that the state dictates the minimums of what we need to review, you know, the highest level. I think as a local community, we, we're free to review it at a different level, though. Would you agree? If we thought there was a probably, you know, more effective way of monitoring our budget, we would be free to do that. We wouldn't have to defer to the state saying, this is the level you should review at, no necessary, you don't need to go any further than that. Would you accept that, that we could as a board decide something differently?
There are districts that don't review it even at the level that we're at. They simply have Fund 10 expenditures and Fund 10 revenue, and that's the level they adopted at. You could adopt it at a level with even more detail, you could certainly do that, but we would need to, we would need to do a lot more work in doing the changes to the budget and telling the public what the changes are, because you'd be changing your budget that you've adopted. And we would have to go back and keep publishing a new budget by going to a more detail. I don't think there's a reason to do it. The board could do it, yes. Yeah, you could do it. You could go either way with it, more detail or less detail. But I think it, the Department of Public Instruction picked that because it's a happy medium of detail. You can see what's going on in each of the areas, and the budget comes out. I mean, we haven't had a budget go over budget since I've been here in 21 years, so I don't see a reason to go into a lot more detail or get a lot more reports when every year it works out.
I guess I'm not suggesting that we would adopt at a different level, but we might review at a different level, just like we look at the check register at a very detailed level. Maybe there's a happy medium between the check register and the state level for budget adoption, which has always been my point. Yeah.
Well, I would agree with Mrs. Wachowski. It is our right as the board to come up with another method. But I would also say to you, can you give us an example of what you're looking for? I mean, can you, can you come back to this board in one meeting or in two meetings with an example, a document that we could look at and we could all, as a board, agree to? Because I don't think we should change our way of doing business unless it's something that we, as an entire board, say that, yeah, that's something that we all want to do. I don't think that we can just charge a change to Mr. Milzer if it's only one person who wants that change. I think we should see, see an example of what you're looking for, because...
And I'm agreeing with that.
And I think that that's your forte, finance is your forte. And I think that if you could come up with a document for us to look at, for us to go over at a future board meeting, that would give us a better example, because I'm not quite sure what you're looking for. Finance is not my forte, that's not what I, where my field of expertise is.
I appreciate that.
But I think, I would appreciate if you could come up with something, and then we as a board could decide if that's something we want to go towards.
And I would even suggest that I don't work alone in that initial prototype, but if anyone would like to join me, and I could work with you. I mean, if you could understand it, and you recognize it's not your forte, and then that would be a winning, I could feel confident I might be worth bringing it to the rest of the board. And I'd like to have a much better idea of exactly what you're hoping that we would gain by a change as well. You know, is the value that would be added to us as board members, you know, worth the extra resources that it would take to prepare something like that? That could be part of the presentation. I'd be happy to do that. But we'd like to... Debbie, are you signing off?
We need a motion to move the check register into...
Do we need a motion to move the check register into the treasurer's report?
I don't think we're ready to do that yet, are we?
I'm, I think we can do that. That's the step in the right direction to recognize that we're not approving checks.
Because you're talking about budget, and the checks are different than the budget, so they're kind of separate issues.
Well, I think moving it under, from the consent agenda, which means it's not being voted on, means it's really a reporting mechanism, a review mechanism, it's not an approval of the checks. I think we should do that. That's just my opinion, but...
Mr. Milzer, the state statute says at school, every school board meeting, we're, well, once a month, we're supposed to present, have available for the public our accounts payables for them to look at if they wish to see them. And that is what our check register was, I'm assuming, because we don't list our payables. So, and it also says they, they can come in and look at any time they want, which of course, we know they can. So, is, is there something else we can put on the consent agenda then in place of a check register, just our payable, you know, our account, accounts payables? Just, and I know I talked to you about that once before, just what we've paid out instead of the check register, and we still approve it.
Do you mean a, a total? Just list a total for what's been paid?
Like the total for payroll or insurance and, you know, the lump sums.
Would we take the, the total from our current check register? Let's say it's a million dollars that we paid off, and that would be in the consent agenda? Is that kind of what you're looking for? So it would say, uh-huh, it would, it would just say that amount in there as far as checks? And you would vote on that?
Well, the, the issue's always been, do we vote on something that's already been done? So the charge was to find a different way to do it, so now we've moved it into, or we're going to move it into the report. So I think we're contradicting the fact that the charge we gave, we're contradicting now what we were asked to come up with, the stay transparent and still not vote on it, but we already know what's going on because we're voting on something that's already been spent. We can't vote against paying for the dumpsters because we've already done the dumpsters. So we have to, as a report, we're still keeping it in here, still public access, right? Our treasurer's report is still open?
You could have a copy of it, but it's...
No, I mean, in our, in our web, in board docs, is the treasurer's report open to the public side?
No, it's not in the public section. So if someone had a question on it...
Oh, so right now it's not?
Right now it's not.
So there's no financial reports in the public section?
Right, right, there aren't.
The budget isn't in the...
The budget is, yeah. The budget, the adopted budget and the draft budgets along the way are on our website. I'm not positive they're in board docs, I believe so, but I'm not positive. So the budget that we're operating under, it is there.
Well...
Do you want me to make a motion?
If you want to make a motion, you're welcome to make a motion.
Melissa, since you proposed or brought this forward, would you like to make a motion?
Um, sure, I can do that. I'll, I'd like to make a motion that we move the check register from the consent agenda to the treasurer's report on future agendas.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Klein, second by Mr. Trailer, to move the check, check register to the treasurer's report. Is there any discussion?
Do you want to make it public?
I, I think it always should have been public.
Jim?
Uh, it's a, it's a public document like anything that anyone can come in and look at, but there's a lot of people's names there who live in the community, who are getting money for different purposes, and I'm, I'm not sure it's something that we have to do for that reason. I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to just put it out there for that. If somebody's interested, they can certainly come in and review the list or anything that we have. But there are some confidentiality's, I think.
What if somebody asked you, would you email it to them?
Well, as, as an open record, certainly we have it as an open record.
But, but they have to request it's open record? Have they just asked, can I have a check?
If they're asking for it, they're asking for an open record. I mean, it doesn't have to be on a form or something like that, and they don't, they don't have to cite statutes or anything like that.
But the state statute says we should have that available here for them to look at, so...
Mm-hmm. We have it on every one of our computers. We could project it up on the screen.
Print a copy.
Print a copy, can have that.
I, I'm in agreement with you. I don't think that that would be necessarily something I think our public would want on our website if you're receiving a check, for whatever reason, and I can't imagine what. But if you're receiving a check, I'm not sure that everyone out there in the public would want their name on our check register for everybody to go through and peruse and find someone's name and then say, oh, why did so-and-so get a check? You know, I think if they have a legitimate reason for seeing that check register, they will make the effort to come forth and see you or make that phone call or...
Agree with Debbie.
Any other discussion?
I've seen out there all their websites, so I'm not sure I'm a fan. But I did want to raise a question, see where people were on that.
Okay, um, we had a motion by Mrs. Klein, second by Mr. Trailer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, um, Mrs. Larson?
Would you mind repeating the motion first, please?
Motion was to move the check register from consent agenda under the treasurer's report.
Aye. Mr. Schleter?
Aye.
Mr. Trailer?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
And I also say aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And the next item is E, treasurer's report.
Okay, the treasurer's report for January twenty thirteen. The general fund balance is eighteen million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars. The debt service fund balance is one million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars. Prior to February twenty-seventh, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of four million dollars for the January thirty-first and February fifteenth payrolls and four accounts payable.
Thank you. Item nine is board meeting debriefing. Does anyone have any comments on today's meeting? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to items ten, future agenda items. We have the audit report, February thirteenth, the assessment report, February twenty-seventh, and Friends of Franklin Public Schools recognition, February twenty-seventh, and a WASB convention report on the twenty-seventh. And do I hear...
Is there a grading report for me? Grading, that should be listed?
Yes, that would be on the twenty-seventh.
Right, there's a grading report on the twenty-seventh that Jamie will facilitate, and Jeff agreed to let Jamie work with Melissa since she's on the committee and has the background knowledge for that, so he'll be contacting her.
He has.
Yes. And then one other, I asked last month if we can move the assessment report from January to February. In the meantime, Mike received information that we will have our WKC test scores by early March, like March fourth or fifth. So if you would like to see those current test scores rather than waiting a whole nother year to see, see them, we'd like to request that we move it to a meeting sometime in April so that we can, A, guarantee the state really gets, gets us to them and, them to us in time. And if you remember, it's that new report card format, so Mike needs to look at those and redesign that assessment report a little bit. So we don't want to say right the first meeting in March just because we can't promise that the state will be that accurate. So if you'd prefer to have that data included, we'd like to request that you let us look at the, what's happening in late April or early May and then move it to that, that time so you can have that current data. So I guess it's your call as a board, what you would prefer.
It would be before April, though.
Right.
Before the board.
Right.
I think that sounds like a great idea. I'd like to see all that data at one, or data at one time.
And that, that would be all data from this current school year that we're reading right now?
From testing in fall of this year.
Okay. I've always wondered, what about the ACT data? Is that, is that during a calendar year or during a school year?
Yeah, we don't...
Because they give those year-round?
That's a good question, because it, it is out of sync with the rest of the test results we get. It comes in July.
Okay.
So we'd be reporting last July's in April.
Okay.
Because it's the most recent one, but it is last July.
The students who are the current seniors that were juniors then?
Yes.
Is that right? Right. I always, I always wondered that.
Well, we'd be able to report current explore and plan because we do...
We get those...
Test on December fifth, and those are here. We've got them now.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
So that's okay with everyone to move in?
So then if Susan Evans would maybe work with Megan and look at what's on that April, and you can decide what would be the most appropriate time to fit it in, because I know you don't like to overload one agenda area.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item eleven, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Schleter.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven twenty-one.